Uh, call this budget shop uh to order and it is six thirty-six. And we will do the roll call. Um, Bill Lobos.
Here.
Bunker.
There.
McClan.
Here.
And um Sam Quinn.
Here.
And Lisa Allen.
Not here.
Okay, and the mayor is here. So we are ready to go. Uh, Jared, it's all yours.
All right, thank you. I want to start sharing our share another app here. All right, so this is a follow-up to our previous budget discussion that we had in June. And if you recall from that June, one of the major things that that came out of that was updating our court revenue costs or court revenues that supplies our general fund. And so I took a lack at took a look at the court revenues from prior years and came up with an average that was probably the more attainable objective, given the amount of municipal court revenue generated in the last two fiscal years. So that reduced the municipal court revenue from ninety thousand to sixty thousand, representing a thirty thousand dollar cut. And so we went through the the general fund budget in pretty good detail last time around. So hopefully the discussion tonight is focused mainly on the that reduction offset of that thirty thousand reduction. And so the proposed budget for um to for consideration by city council tonight is these following offsets. So I reduced the election expense amount from twelve thousand to eight thousand. There is some inherent risk in that. I'll explain it. Assumption that's underlying that reduction is that in addition to be able to part in addition to be able to partner with local nearby jurisdictions for elections and having a um highly qualified person on our team who who can manage elections. Reduction also assumes that we a budget of only one election next fiscal year. Mainly that we do not have ballot initiatives in November that are submitted based off of um petitions such as disannexation or some other um issue that comes through a petition. Now.
Uh, Jared, this is saying, when is the deadline if they want to put it in the election for, I mean, we're we have two city council positions oh open then in twenty twenty-two?
Three.
Right.
Three.
Yep, the city council positions are the May election. The um November election would not have anything if were not for a petition that was received. And that petition can be submitted up until pretty late. I I don't think I'm pretty sure that the timeline for that happens in fiscal year. We uh twenty-two.
Okay, okay.
Sylvia, are you in the room by chance?
A real quick question, Jared. Pardon pardon for last week. I was on I was driving from Santa Fe to uh uh tiles and I had spotty cellphone covered. Sorry for the, you know, I I didn't. I was there about half the time. Uh, real quick on this revenue reduction. You said was that? I mean, we did have a COVID year. So what was the average for previous years without the COVID from our revenue from the court?
It's roughly sixty thousand, you know, all the exact number um here.
Yes, so 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 before COVID or prior to COVID, it was it was averaging about sixty?
No, ninety.
Ninety?
Oh, yeah, before COVID, it was it was the in two thousand seventeen was seventy about seventy-one thousand. In two thousand eighteen, ninety-nine thousand. Two thousand nineteen, almost a hundred and four thousand. And then twenty twenty, it went back down to fifty-eight thousand. And then so far this year, we're looking at a projection of roughly forty-four thousand.
So we're we're uh so we don't we still we're still in dealing with COVID at this point somewhat uh soon.
COVID and staffing.
Okay.
Uh, we've had we've had difficulty maintaining our our full police force. Um, after we we lost a a full-time officer in uh during nineteen or twenty uh up years ago now. When once he left, he decided to try to the the staff, the police department, that additional that second full-time equivalent position using um, excuse me, part-timers. And that has not worked out very well.
Dan, you sound rough, dude. Sorry, I hate to ask you a question.
Geez, we can put this off. You're not feeling well, Jared.
Sorry, I just a tickle. So when we've been trying to staff it with part-timers, we have not successfully done that in the last year and a half on a consistent basis. That's reflected in some of that court revenue, I think, due to a lack of traffic stops in the last.
So I mean, I want to I don't I'll this the last question I'll ask you about this this issue, promise. Uh, so with the way this year's going, it is one of our lowest years. I mean, prior to COVID, I mean, this is this definitely lower than we we typically have in the past. Correct? You said so would you say your average probably is around probably around eighty to ninety thousand? You know, not counting COVID, but say prior to say nineteen and and before.
Yeah, the the three prior years COVID, the municipal court revenue was seventy-one thousand, ninety-nine thousand, and about a hundred and four thousand.
That's also the last sheet in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I've seen it now. Sorry for uh right in front of me. Okay, I mean, I I don't. I mean, you've been spending time on this. I mean, is there any any way we could split the difference, maybe make it seventy? Or is that not that not a viable option?
The the risk that we would have is that we could, I mean, we could make the number, you know, whatever number we want in our budget. But you don't want but you want to be able to make sure it's risk adjusted to some degree. The risk that we have if we budget a revenue greater than what comes in is that the budget deficits.
Gotcha.
And so if we did that, we could end up spending money we don't have.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's the reason I was I was being fairly concerned sort of at sixty. But you can see that sixty still uh probably about a fifteen thousand dollar increase from what we did this last year and on part of when we had only half of of the fiscal year, the impact of my COVID in twenty twenty.
That's a good explod. Okay, that's enough for me. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jared, this is Jan. Uh, now, did we include this loss in uh the COVID crank grant?
So the COVID.
Are the COVID reimbursement?
Two, there's two COVID sources of money. One is the COVID relief fund. That that um effort did not uh relate to revenue loss. It only covered expenses. There is a new amount of funding that we expect to receive um or that will will be spending paperwork for. We were spending some paperwork, but the rest of the paperwork comes comes a little bit later. And that's at two hundred and seventy thousand or so. Those funds can be used for lost revenues. And so we could potentially tie that in um.
But because we don't have it.
But it's yeah, it on the total balance, our revenue and our budget for this year, we're still on track to to come out without any significant deficits because our sales tax is so strong. Now, we could go back and say, all right, we're gonna um adjust our municipal court revenue amounts uh in prior years and then take that additional surplus from those prior years and put it into long-term capital improvement fund. It might just be easier to go ahead and say, let's put that money in a lumped-up for capital improvement rather than going through the machinations of reimbursing ourselves for lost revenue that's could be related to or could not. The the recommendation there being, I think we're better off anticipating the revenue decrease and using those additional funds for, you know, other items that might fall within that fund use.
Okay. All right, so go ahead. Finish your suggestion where we.
Yeah, so the offset of reducing the elections amount by four thousand dollars. The risk there is is that we get a budget uh get a um petition in September, October for something to be on the it'll be October uh for something about the election. And then once that if that happens, then we'll probably have a um deficit in our elections account, so to speak. We don't really have an elections account, but we'll end up spending more than what's in the budget left offset somewhere else later when that if that ever happens. Office supplies, reduce the office supplies from six thousand to five thousand. That's roughly in line with where we're at. Uh, we'll have to tighten the belt a little bit to to make that work. But it's not not overly burdensome. Uh, the property, go ahead.
Does the postage, is that considered an office supply postage?
No, we have a separate line item for that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The uh also reduce the property liability insurance on the budget. I think I might have made an inadvertent mistake previously in our property liability liability insurance um where I was tracking that the cost would be closer to eleven thousand. But historically, it's closer to nine. I think what might have happened is just the billing cycles and that projection of when that happens uh came out wrong. But Wayne, is does this does that change make sense to you?
I'm trying to drill it into the line item to see.
Um, yeah, the line item for that is
sixty-five fifty.
Yep.
Okay, so we've spent uh sixty-three hundred dollars through nine months.
Right.
Payment, your payments appear to be nineteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, that explains that.
And then we've got uh the uh bonds um at about four hundred dollars. Yeah.
Yeah, that's quarterly also.
No, once.
Once. So we Yeah, all right. Okay, so we're we're about eight for about eight thousand for the last couple of years and our projections about eight and a half. So I think we're okay with them now. I think that because it's a quarterly statement, when I was doing my arithmetic of the projected remaining cost, because we just crossed over a new quarter, um probably capturing additional costs because it's like like a you know, a cost per day or cost per month item.
Not seeing that uh line item in our handouts. Sixty-three what fifty?
So go to the third.
It's up here on your screen.
And and it's line sixty-five fifty in the middle of the.
Sixty-five fifty, okay. Got it. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Um, look. The the next one is the street maintenance and repair. This is the general fund amount. Reducing the general fund, street maintenance repair by about six thousand dollars, from twenty-two thousand down to sixteen thousand. However, in total, street maintenance repair, that it would still maintain a budget of a total of forty thousand between the general fund and the special restricted funds. If you recall, we we talked about in our budget setting that I was projecting a a total sales tax revenue pre, you know, paying back to our old fees and and things about a hundred and twenty thousand. And how that all shakes out is you have different amounts that go in different bucket. So if we have a total collected sales tax over the course of a year of a hundred and twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand would be sent to our the repayment of the old debt. Twenty-four thousand would then be sent to our street and road repair um as a restricted account item. And the sales tax remaining would go to our general fund. In our general fund, we we have an additional spend item in addition to the twenty-four thousand that would be projected to our street roads. It also goes to street roads. And so that forty thousand dollar figure is roughly what we've done over the last three or four years. And so this would maintain that similar spend, but it helps us get down to where we need to be in our thirty thousand cut.
What line item is the the street maintenance? Don't say street maintenance maintenance. Says something else, right?
Is it eighty eighty?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Uh, Jared, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but
Oh, there it is.
Uh, but on the on the street maintenance, I mean, well, but you know, I've been involved with this interlocal agreement with the county. And I mean, that could save us a lot of money by doing an interlocal with the county because they do it for cost. That could save us some money down the road for pothole repair. Uh, Catherine, when we had our when we had our meeting, didn't they say it was about fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars or to fix lockhart street?
I believe so, yes.
That's very reasonable. So I I mean, I'm still saying that that that's the advantage of doing an interlocal agreement. We don't have to pay engineering cost like for Turk, like twenty thousand dollars, we can reduce those costs and then do it.
No, so so most most of what you see here is is pothole repair. Um, how we do it isn't necessarily going to be a budget discussion for today.
Okay, okay, I'm just gonna bring it out.
How much, you know, if we do that, if that can stretch the dollar further further, that sounds great. But what we're talking about today is
Okay.
the general spending sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm on.
Question on that. Yeah, okay. The next one is removing the city-sponsored commerce grant. That's a you know, that's that's a nice to have. Um, it's something that was asked that came out of our strategic planning process where um trying to put some city funds into improving the commercial environment in 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 the city. And it's something we haven't done previously is what it takes some research to do and construct. And um, given that we are being hit by a thirty thousand dollar cut, I figured this is a responsible place to to assume some of that cut.
It's something we can do for next year, though.
Yeah, it's something we could always do in the future, but for for a while, until we have our police department routinely staffed at its authorized staffing level and we have the amount of um for revenues being being generated uh or till we have a good better number of what our court revenue should be, once we have a fully staffed police department. Um, I think we hold off on this. I I for now. And the last ones of another is the largest bill pair of them all is the uh capital improvement fund savings. So we were going to budget for a forty-one thousand dollar savings, put in our capital improvement fund. This would reduce that to twenty-nine thousand. And what's really important to keep in mind with that is our our matching amount for this six-point-seven million dollar grant is about sixty-seven thousand dollars. And so really with the capital improvement fund savings that we're making a deposit on this next year, fiscal year twenty-two would help us pay for that matching component um in the future years when we when we go for it. So I wanted to keep this number as close to roughly half that match as possible, which would have been right about thirty-four thousand dollars. Other places that cut didn't make sense for this fiscal year. Maybe, you know, so I think reducing our savings or, you know, the twenty-nine thousand still gets us pretty close to half of that bill that's going to come due, but it's still uh is responsive to a reduction municipal court revenues. All right.
So we did all of them? Would that equal uh I I'm had I can't do math. Would that equal thirty thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
So we can I can run you through the spreadsheet if if you want. So here's here's the um in the spreadsheet, we're cutting eight thousand off of the election expenses. And office supplies was no, six thousands down to five. Property liability insurance was eleven down to nine. From twenty-two to sixteen on the street maintenance repair reduction from it's about forty thousand dollars to thirty-nine thousand. They reduced the ceasefire grant, zeroed it out. And that gets us to a a balance of uh five hundred forty, five hundred fifty-four thousand dollars on the revenue side. There's another example of the on the summit. You can see it in in terms of, you know, operating expenses and contractual expenses and how that totals up. On the revenue side, that reduction it also equals five hundred fifty-four thousand. So we're we're at balance with our general fund with that proposed change, those proposed changes.
Hey, Jared, Sonia Villalobos speaking. Uh, just uh what I'm apprehensive about is because I know from previous trends uh for the disannexation coming up every year on the ballot. Um, I am leery about cutting that amount from that line item just on previous trends as I stated.
For which for which item?
Elections.
Okay, that's what I thought, just confirming.
Yeah, I I think that's a that's a reasonable thing to be leery about. There there's a that's a definite risk within this budget. It's one that we could the that we could address. Four thousand is, you know, it's something that we could look to revise the budget for if that ballot comes in. In some ways, it's kind of, hey, a little bit of a policy messaging standpoint for for the city to say, we're we're kind of done budgeting for this item to keep purring.
Right.
Um, we're going to have a budget that's going to go forward as what we assume should be the right but we assume is the the answer to what our election needs are based off of you know, the positions and issues that need to go to election. We only based on our projection of what election is needed, we only have one election that's needed. We're not doing any bonds elections. We're not doing any other, you know, tax election or any other election that the city's planning to do. The city is planning to only have one election. And so that's that's where I thought, you know, there's a risk there. I think it's it's a it's the policy of the city that we're going to go ahead and just have our one election. Thank you very much.
And see, I mean, that's that's great. That's in a Pollyanna world. That would be lovely. But we're in a dog-eat-dog world and, man, we just got to be prepared, you know, and I'm just like saying, like, looking off a trend uh previously. Um, and I think legally, you know, well, by law, if it's turned in, we can't say, oh, well, we didn't do that in the budget, so we can't have it. We still have it.
Yeah, we still have to have it um without doubt. What we would do, though, it was it would force that budget rebudgeting process back into the public sphere. And so we can you can show more clearly at the time that that's happening. All right, because of this, we're that's five thousand dollars. That's not going to our capital improvement fund.
Um, for the record, um, Ken, does anybody remember how many times that disannexation has been put on the ballot and failed?
Guess at the number, but I I don't know.
Is it four? I think it's three or four. Okay, I think it's four.
Well, if if they if they do the petition in time for the May election, how much extra will that cost?
Would it?
It wouldn't.
It would be if they missed the deadline and we would have to have one in November. That's where the cost would incur.
Right, if they put in a petition before the deadline or before the deadline for the November election, we would have to do one, which would cost another eight thousand dollars. Oh, four thousand. Okay.
It will. It depends on who else is having an election. So
If their school board or
Right.
or other election that we could um absorb the cost with or share some of the cost.
Yeah, they they let us do that last year. Because I had
We chose not to.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah.
I'm willing to take the risk.
Yeah, I'm willing to take the risk.
Yeah, it'd be, because I think if you just explain to them, if the if they do file a petition, can they choose to do it? And they get it in in time for the November election, can they choose to do it in May?
I I I'm
Or they have to
That definitively, but my my understanding is that they would have to do a new ballot or petition.
Okay.
It's only good for a certain amount of time for the election in which it's intended, as I understand it.
So so Jared, I would like to entertain this notion. Um, I certainly understand that it's always a possibility. So I too feel like we should move forward and take the risk. However, I would like to know, you know, I'd like for us to discuss what our contingency would be and where would we pull from what other area, from what other line item would we pull if we were faced with that situation again?
My recommendation was it would be it comes out of capital improvement fund.
Okay.
That's but there's not
That that that
I'm assuming to have.
That has the least impact.
Yeah.
I think that I think that's important for us to, you know, identify and um and everyone to sort of, you know, not sort of, but to to weigh in if if we think that is a good backup plan. So if and when, if and when we had to pull that trigger, we would have already determined where it was coming from and there would be no surprises.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Okay, let's back on track. We're kind of Okay, let's back on track. We're kind of, Jared doesn't feel good and let's just go on.
No, 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 this is all, this all valuable discussion. Um. And I'm, I'm available. We can go through the rest of the general fund expense items if we choose to, but we, we reviewed them. Without really much, wasn't any recommended changes last time. So these are all re- changes that I'm recommending to make from our June fifteenth meeting.
Okay.
And if, and if we're good with this and I'll, I'll kind of call this one final, and this is what we'll use. Um.
Make up that.
For, for the, uh, publishing in the draft budget.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Mm hmm.
Mine.
It's okay with me. All right. All right, the only last remaining budget setting issue that, um. We need to discuss is something we, we tabled. Following the June fifteenth meeting or during the June fifteenth, I should say, is our. Uh, revenue and expenses for utility fund are out of alignment. Basically, right now, the, the budget for the utility fund is that deficit of about seven thousand dollars. And we'll need to put that. Get it back into balance. And so the discussion last time regarding the, the cause for it being out balance. Out mainly with. Almost, almost exclusively, but not completely with the increased costs and payroll costs for utility clerks. Associated with a, um, change to a fifteen dollar minimum wage for that position. Uh, improve recruitment and retention of utility clerks. And at the time that it was requested, go bring back some additional data on that topic. Uh, for, for further discussion. So I prepared a couple of slides. To that. So, um, I'll start here. So expense comparisons, you, you'll see the total utility fund expenses, that top line, that blue line. And how it's looked over the course of, uh, last eight years or several. Six years of actuals. Seven years of actuals, FY twenty one projected and what the twenty two looks like. So the total expenses are, have hovered around the three hundred thousand dollar amount in the police fund. Of that. Between sewer and solid waste are the next two lines. And so a similar trend. Solid waste line is the gray line and that's. Those expenses are reflective of the fees, the contracts that the city had for solid waste. Um. So you can see that twenty fourteen, they're, they're quite low. They were getting higher about twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen was when the city, uh, embarked on a. Uh, parent study with, with other similar sized cities. It was recognized that our solid waste contract. Our solid waste customers were paying much more than, uh, other similarly located in size cities. So we, the, the, the contract with our solid waste provider was renegotiated and. Over the last couple of years, we've, we've seen some reduction. The spike that you're seeing at the end. There is a rate increase, um, on that, but it's also pulling, uh, customer data. Could possibly be out of date. The thing about solid waste expenses are, it, it's kind of self-funded on the revenue line because. We, our solid waste bill is comprised of essentially three parts. The direct cost of that customer that is charged under the contract by, by our solid waste provider. A, um, a fat fee that's added to the bill. And a franchising fee, basically another surplus fee. That's added on to that bill. And so. You have about, I think it's eight dollars and. Three percent for every customer is part revenue. The rest of it is just a pass. So while this solid waste goes up and down, it doesn't have a really much impact on our. Utility fund balance. Other than to say the more customers that we have, the more revenue that we have that been rated. On the sewer side. There's been periods of. Deferred maintenance is why I would consider it. Um. And. We're, we, twenty fourteen, there's about a hundred thousand dollars in total sewer costs. That's including. You know, the, the wastewater treatment plant operator repairs, what have you. Now, there was a, um, grant that was received that expanded the sewer system. That, that expense has been out, taken out of this. So even with that being removed, we still have a. Period of deferred maintenance and. You can see since twenty eighteen, we tried to stop, twenty seventeen had a, was getting back to normal. Twenty eighteen was down. We're trying to stop that trend in, uh. Deferred maintenance. As, as we all know, the FY twenty one projected is looking lower. That's really because we're doing more deferred maintenance. We have the, the crockett lift station. Um, pump tube elbow issue. That's, you know, those twenty thousand dollars. Being out there. We also have our, our electrical, electrical repairs and upgrades that are needed. So really, while you see a bend in the curve going back down for FY twenty one. By the end of the year, I, I don't expect it to, to be that low again. So our, our sewer costs have gone down, but I think artificially so. Just because we're sending money, not spending money, doesn't mean we're not incurring, you know, costs somewhere down the line. And I think that's. I could, I could show us in the next couple of years.
So why are you taking that grant out of the picture?
Uh, because it, it was funded out of, it's funded separately. It wasn't a utility, the, the check. Came out of the utility fund at that time, but is really a. Be development fund item.
So you're proposing that we raise the sewer's costs? Um, to the customers?
Yes, that, that's, that's ultimately what I'm getting to, but, uh, wanted, wanted to go through the data as was, since the council requested. Little additional insight on what the cost for over the last number of years. And you can see that the payroll costs have been, uh, roughly fat.
Yes.
What?
Uh, have been roughly flat.
Flat.
Oh, flat, okay.
Yeah, sorry. A little, a little horse, so sorry about that.
You're doing good, you know?
All right. So on, on the payroll, let's. Is there a discussion? On the, on the payroll, want to dig into it a little bit more. So. And, uh. I wanted to look at where, where we would be at based on where we were. What I mean by that is. If in twenty fourteen, if we had a certain payroll cost. And that had a, a, you know, annual. You know, cost of living inflation increase. Of annually. Where would we expect that to be nowadays compared to what the actuals happen? So the payroll projections, that orange line that is shallowly sloped up. Payroll actuals are in blue. Now, I will note that in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. During that period, all payroll costs were paid out of the general fund. And so. I didn't have the data for those years, so I took an average of twenty eighteen and twenty fifteen to kind of fill that gap. That's a little bit less important, but that's part of the reason why you sit a little bit tighter there than the, the last couple of years. Payroll costs in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty. Projected for twenty one. Are reflective of. You know, are the. The pay rates and also the number of hours that have been charged. And so. We've had some turnover. It's left some vacancies that saved the, the city some money. That's the simplest way to, to kind of explain why those. Quite as hard. What I'm looking to do in FY twenty two is try to correct it's a couple of things. Mainly. That, uh. Retention issue. By paying more, we'll retain our employees longer. Also, I pay more if we do have a. Um. Somebody leave us, we'll build recruit higher quality candidates. Our most recent hiring initiative for this position. Uh, which we used. Indeed, which is a very popular hiring site and others to get our name out there. Resulted in a lot of resumes. I think somewhere in the ballpark of forty to sixty resumes we received. Of those. Only two or three were, were worth interviewing. Um. Two declined the interview. One interviewed and then declined. Um. Luckily, we, we had, we had other, uh, ability to, uh, bring in somebody else. But he's been a great addition to the team. And hiring before that opportunity, you know, was, was difficult in itself. We, we made, we made two hires. And one left within a matter of, of months due to, um, family commitment issues. Or. Perceivably, you know, pay could have. You know, had different activism for that person. I mean, it's not a big, big increase, but you know, when your, your, when your payroll is somewhere between twelve and fifteen dollars an hour. And you're competing with other places that will pay at a minimum fifteen dollars an hour. The loyalty to stay with the city is less. And so. That's where I'm looking to, to make this up. By having a, across the board pay raise to fifteen dollars an hour minimum for all city employees. Pause there for.
This is just for the two utility clerks.
Uh, it would also apply to the court clerk, though that impact on the budget is quite small.
That's what I was thinking. It was a court clerk also.
Oh, that's paid out of the utility.
The, the court clerk is paid out of the general fund.
Okay, but it's included in this, what you're showing, right?
It is not included in this. This, this payroll is only the utility fund portion of the payroll. The, the general fund. Has, i- i- in cover that payroll increase for the court clerk. With, with that issue. The, the issue here is. It's, you know, with, with some of the deferred maintenance and. Um, staffing. Increasing our employees to, to fifteen dollars an hour.
Hey, Jared, this Sonia, but like with, with us talking about this for the utility clerk, the same thing would be on the court side, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but it's different. It's, you're, you're exactly right. It's the same thing. But on this chart, this is because the, the, who pays their checks. Is, is different. So. Um, one's the utility fund. So we have. In our general fund, we have payroll expenses. And in our utility fund, we have payroll expenses. So we're, in our payroll expenses on the general fund. We're in balance. Payroll expenses on the utility fund. We're at a seven per, seven thousand dollar deficit. Which is why I'm focusing.
Gotcha.
Cause we want to raise the. I. But. I hate raising the rates of it. But it's minimal. I understand it's minimal.
Yeah, so here's, here's a quick look on. You know what? This chart is a little bit difficult to read, but I'll try to, you know, put out the high points. At, uh. Estimated number of customers. By their billing category. And. Looks at what the difference would be if we did a rate change. That increase the base rates by a dollar. So for commercial customers. From thirty five dollars in a base rate, just thirty six dollars to a base rate. Twenty five dollars as a base rate for residential to a twenty six dollar base rate for residential. And then for each. Additional. Um, thousand gallons, I think is what, yeah, thousand gallons. What that rate change would be. So it'd be an additional dollar per thousand gallons. So you have a little bit of a. Greater degree of impact. Between. The. Higher water usage areas in the, um, residential. Though for most, most people. You know, it's a. Top.
It's just a dollar.
Up, up eighty three percent, eighty three percent of our customers. Would see a rate change of only a couple of dollars a month. You know, half of them would see it, their rate go up by a dollar. Seventy, almost seventy percent of them would see their rate go up by two dollars. You know, two dollars or less. Who it starts to impact more. Are those who make. Pretty high usage of our, um, water. So. By having a, having a fee structure this way. Increases revenues, but it also encourages more sustainable practices by our. Water. By water customers who, 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 um, which is the basis for dealing.
So I wanted to ask you, the increase per thousand gallons, this is something that the city is. Wanting to do, and it has nothing to do with any rate increases that the water supply company is projecting to. Give forth towards, towards the city. It's just.
No, no, this. Yeah, so this, this is changing our code of ordinances. In our solid waste provisions. And this is changing. The monthly rate schedule. By a dollar increase. For the first two thousand gallons. And for. Thousand gallons up. So it's twenty five, twenty six, this three fifty would change to four fifty.
I, I see. It's a sewer in, in, increase. Not based on any, it's what the city is charging the customer to. Have an increased sewer rate.
Based on work and something.
Based on what.
Mm hmm. I think it's justified.
Okay. Do also a quick question about garbage. Do people that with, live within the city limits are required to pay a garbage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those, those adjust automatically.
Right, that's via our contract. Now, are we planning on, uh. Going out to get, uh, another contract? For, uh, for bids for sewage?
Not at this time, um, our contract that we have with, can, can go up to five years. At this time, um, our contract that we have with can can go up to five years.
Is that what she said? For sewer?
Yeah.
I thought it was time for.
You talk about solid waste.
Not trash.
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about solid waste or sewer.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Which one?
The the sewer. The solid waste is our trash.
Correct.
And that's, there's really nothing we can do about that. But I thought the maintenance contract was up for our sewage.
For the operator, for the maintenance, maintenance operator, they're different.
Okay, so the maintenance operator is that's due.
Uh, no, our our contracts as far as the wastewater treatment plant in our sewer operations. Are. They're still valid. Last year, we we went. Through a a contract award and we wore it. Contract that has one base year and four options. Those options. You know, renewed each year. Which had pre-negotiate or predetermined pricing for for each year. The. Mowing contract is is still in place as well. Base here and options. So we don't.
That inspire the mowing.
Another year. Not during this timeline, so that's not gonna happen, okay? It's not gonna happen this year.
The only way it could happen is. If it made sense for the city to cancel its contract, not renew an option and. Go out for new bids. There was one company that was interested in submitting a proposal. Last year when we were doing the the long term contract. Um, they're also the wastewater operators for the city of San Marcos, a large international company.
Right.
They they've continued to be interested in possibly doing with business with City of Martin Dell. I've met with them. And let them know that we're happy with who we have. But I'm going to continue to, you know, accept estimates if you think you can save us cost. I haven't received anything back from them. But in that that, you know, they come back and say, we can save so much money by going with us instead of them. At that point, we'd have to recompete the entire contract award. And then accept new proposals and offers. That that could happen. I don't expect it to.
But that's not the point here.
No.
But a lot of our. The reasons why. We're not making any money off of our sewage is because we have so much problems with it.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, we got it, we got it, you know, because we can't fix our. Uh, you know. Uh, the operating cost of these. Uh, of the sewage is kind of gone through the roof the last couple of years, correct? And things need to be repaired.
Yeah, I I know the costs have gone up. But the maintenance backlog has increased.
Yes.
Due to the age of the plant.
Not so much. Deferred maintenance in years past.
The infrastructure maintenance of the sewer.
Lift stations, yada, 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 now. And I thought we got a grant to help us beat that up. And hopefully that will take care of it. Right?
Some immediate issues, yes, but.
Okay, well. Uh, there's, if that's all, if if this is our only choice, then, uh, does I think we need to pay our utility clerks?
Yeah, if you're looking at a way to.
Our only option, then I'll I'll go for it. It seems reasonable. It's not.
Yeah, there's really not an opportunity for us to, I mean, we could reduce costs in our sewer system. But. You're you're going to defer maintenance. For longer.
Yeah. Okay, I'm okay with it.
I'm good.
Yeah, it's been a while since we had an in increase in the sewer.
From from the last time it was adjusted, from what I can tell, was three fourteen.
Okay.
That sounds about right.
Okay, let's give these guys a raise. Or more hours or both.
Or ten months.
More holidays, yeah. All right.
Mike, any discussion on this?
No, sir.
We'll give you a raise too.
As a member of club, did you have any comments, discussion on this item?
No, I'm I'm satisfied.
Uh, customer Clinton?
No, I think it's justifiable. It hasn't been increased in since twenty fourteen, so that that seems fine.
As a member below us, we already heard from you, correct?
Uh, I I said I was good with it.
And customer Sean Allen? All right. That's that's the end of this budget discussion that I had prepared. The only other item on the agenda. It's the tax rate. I was hoping to have that by now, but it looks like it's not going to be until probably Friday of next week. Which is okay. Uh, we're we're still, we're still in okay shape. As long as, as long as we have it, I don't think. I don't think we'll need another discussion on that. The issue that that we're I'm looking at is our next regularly scheduled council meetings on the twentieth. If I if I don't get the. Tax information, it's going to be after the agenda setting date for the Thursday. When I'm when I'm looking at the. Rules for publishing. Um, the tax information and tax rates. I don't think we'll go and need a meeting on the twenty seventh. I think we're okay with waiting till August third. Um, and that'll still give us.
We gotta publicize it, right?
Yeah, we'll do, we can have the discussion on August third. Publicizing should really happen by August sixth or that following week. The last last day to do it is at the end of August. But I want to keep us on track to. Able to. Um, have public hearing and adopt a budget in the early part of September, not the latter part of September. So. Assuming that this next week goes well and the the numbers come out and they look familiar to me and. We're okay with the, you know. Property taxes. Need to meet again on it until August, but if something comes up. I don't know if it'll happen in time for the twentieth agenda. We might need something on the twenty seventh. But at this point, I.
Yes. Couldn't we just always put it on the agenda, but like if it doesn't come through, that we just table it?
Yeah.
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 Just to be on the same side.
Good idea.
Okay, let's do that. So, getting further on the tax rate now. We'll put it on the agenda and if we have the discussion, we have the discussion if if not. We'll we'll find out back.
Uh, Jared, I had a quick question about the property tax. So the projection of. The increase of the revenue from the property tax from three hundred and forty two thousand to propose three hundred and fifty three. Is that a reflection of the in increase of the rate?
The rates being reduced from the FY twenty one rate. Down from a, you know, forty four cents per hundred dollars or the the. To forty two. Which is, I don't know, the full reduction in that maybe two percent something. Um, the tax rate being reduced, but the revenue is going up. Mainly because. The values are going up so fast.
Yes.
Of the new property additions, let's see.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's just make a note to make sure we have this on the agenda. It's the tax rate we want, we need to. Discuss possibly. Just make sure that it's on the agenda. Talk about it, then we can.
And if it's not, we could just.
We can table it, okay. All right. Anything else, Jared?
Hope you do a German.
Oh, okay.
What was that?
Please ready for adjournment. I I I make a motion, will you adjourn our workshop?
Is there a second? Sonia, do you have a little second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty eight P M.
Get some rest, Jared.
Yes.